Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 8:36 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Como will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I'm here.
The thirteen present to...
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton.
This is back one of our members.
Recognition. Also joining us this evening at 8:38 PM is Alderman O'Brien. He took a double break. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of October 25th, 2022, to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding communication on potential new development projects for PETA.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director, regarding communication approval and place on file, a contract for professional services related to the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Improvementation Project for HSI Inc.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to approve and enter into a contract with Hayner Swanson, Incorporated, for project management in the final design phase of the riverfront project in the amount of $1,029,320. Funding will be through the TIF account.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do support the motion. We talked about this in the Finance Committee. I'd just like to point out for the record, I went back and looked at a couple of items throughout the course of the last couple of years, and just so everyone understands, we've spent a little north of $3.5 million so far on the riverfront project and haven't, as I would say, turned a shovel yet. So just so everybody has that in the back of their mind, we're spending a lot of money on consulting and engineering, but we haven't actually started moving any earth yet, so hopefully we get around to that pretty soon. But like I said, I do support this contract.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Thomas J. Leonard, Chairman, Pennechuck Corporation, regarding special meeting of the sole shareholder January 27th, 2023, proxy statement and proxy card.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I motion to recommend that the committee elect Ralph Jenkins to the Pennechuck Corporation Board of Directors as a Class B Director to fill the vacancy resulting from the resignation of James Door and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sole shareholders to the Board of Directors of Pennechuck Corporation by roll call. And if I may speak to it for a moment.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you. Last night, we met with the Pennechuck Corporation, and the reason for filling this issue as it states right there is that there was a resignation. The gentleman that they're going to be put in place will again, I think they said in May, have to go through another process of that. So you're going to see his name come up again. But with the resignation, they wanted to keep it there. He had very, very specialized skill sets, and they are kind of redoing their board of skills. Mr. Gudhue will be at the end of the year retiring. So they're, yeah, so they're slowly kind of redoing many of their who does what and so on, and he's even given up a couple of his positions and so on to this very particular position and so on. So we had a very good discussion. I think it was a good choice on their part. But again, I just want to say that you're going to say, wait a minute, didn't we do this? We're going to hear about it again in May. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Sullivan.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Clea.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Moran.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Lopez.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Jettie.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Clemmons.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Como.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Dowd.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Goveya.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Karen.
Rob Jenkins.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Ralph Jenkins.
Alderman Wilshire.
Ralph Jenkins.
You have fourteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Airport Authority, Farrell Woods, reappointment, term to expire January 10th, 2028, 162 Bush Hill Road, Hudson, New Hampshire, 03051. Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee, Pamela Anderson, reappointment, term to expire January 10th, 2026, 9 Plainfield Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Jeff Hannigan, reappointment, term to expire January 10th, 2026, 32 Howd Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Stephen Kenny, new appointment, term to expire January 10th, 2026, 9 Sagamore Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Paulo Lockhead, reappointment, term to expire January 10th, 2026, 4 Westbrook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Tricia Mullen, reappointment, term to expire January 10th, 2026, 275 Broad Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 5th, 2022 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 7th, 2022 Finance Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Pennechuck Special Water Committee meeting held Monday, January 9th, 2023, regarding a communication needing final approval and proposed Resolution R. 2279. Alderman Clea.
Thank you. Last night, we had a, again, a meeting of the Pennechuck Special Water Committee, and they discussed the reason for this particular thing. We'd already given all of the approvals, if I'm not mistaken, and there were certain, I'm trying to find my notes here, of course, there were certain items that had kind of come forward that needed to be, it was part of the closing in legal needed what they call a guarantee, and that needed to be put into it. So that's basically the portion of it that we are voting on here tonight. I ask the question for the purpose of the public, and I will state the question and the answer about the guarantee. Does that mean that the city is on the hook if this loan is defaulted on? And the answer is no. The city is never on the hook for this. It will always be the corporation, and it will be their assets that are, so to speak, on the line, not the taxpayers or the city. So this is just, as I stated before, the loan and everything has already gone through the approval process. We have already approved this. It's just the closing in legal, they found out that they didn't have the guarantee in there that needed to be put in this. And this is for the location of, I believe, in Wyndham. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Housing Trust Fund Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of William Dolan, 71 Spitbrook Road, Unit 109, Nashua, to the Housing Trust Fund Committee with a term to expire January 1st, 2026. Mr. Dolan, if you'd come forward to take the oath of office, please. You can come right up in the horseshoe here, right up here.
Right here is good. Right here is good. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the House Fund, Housing Trust Fund Committee, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire?
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ethics Review Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Timothy E. Bush, 378 Main Street, Nashua, to the Ethics Review Committee with a term to expire January 1st, 2026. I don't believe he's here this evening. He will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-22-079, approving guarantee by Pennechuck Corporation of a loan to Pennechuck East Utility, Inc., from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R. 22-079. And again, in reference to the previous comments, it was specifically about the closing in legal needed for the guarantee.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution 22789 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-22-039, amending the tax exemption for elderly persons by increasing the maximum allowed individual combined net income and asset amounts.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you again, Madam President. I motion for final passage of O-22-039, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you so much. We've discussed this before, and this was just kind of closing the loop in the exemption that had already been given. And what we did before was increase the exemption, but we didn't do all of the work of increasing the combined net income and the assets amounts. And that's what this does. And we did, we went within 8%, which is basically what Social Security was given. I spoke to Mr. Griffin and so on, and it was a, basically a federal number that he felt comfortable with, and we applied it to both the assets as well as the net income. And I'm going to ask Attorney Bolton, if I have this wrong, to please correct me. One of the questions that had come up in the past was, why do we have single and married under the same amount? And if I'm not mistaken, the answer that was given was because if we didn't and one person had passed, we would have to revert them down to the single, and this, of previous boards had agreed that it was better to keep that continuity so they didn't lose that credit. Am I accurate, more or less, in my description?
More or less.
Okay. I may not be perfect on that, but I agree. Other communities do have a different single and married, and when I did contact some of those other communities, and I asked them, you know, what have they had in the past, and there have been some that have lost it. Oftentimes, they don't. They do a grandfather in, but I think the way that we're doing it is the best way to do it. That is not acknowledged in here. I'm just giving that as ancillary information. So thank you, Madam President.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance 2239 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-080 regarding the care and control of school building properties.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-23-081, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a contract with Ada Outdoor Media for transit advertising services.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-23-040, amending the land use code regarding parking space requirements for middle and high schools.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 7th, here in the Aldermanic Chamber. Period for general public comment, and no one has signed up. Remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight.
Happy to react.
All set. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just want to say that I've been at that same presentation that the EPA gave on those containment, and they are very secure and will have the containment of that material such that it won't be impacted at any time. It could withstand a number of things, including an earthquake, without disruption.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So the last time we were all together, I shared the sad news of the passing of Coach and Teacher Bill Munson from Nashville South. Tonight, I'd just like to send my thanks to Nashville South Administration, particularly Lisa Gengris, their Athletic Director. They put on a celebration of life ceremony for Coach Munson, and based on my sloppy math, there were over 1,000 people there to celebrate Coach Munson. There were family, friends, former students, former athletes. It was over an hour of people sharing stories about how he touched their lives, and it was very moving, and I was really glad that I went, and I just want to thank the staff at South for putting that on. It was a great event, and it was great for the students, so I greatly appreciated that. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I was impressed with the presentation made about the site over by the river, and I was very pleased, and I found it very interesting that the developer volunteered that these homes would not be heated by natural gas but by some alternative fuel system, which I thought was very enlightening and very encouraging. And I applaud them for making, evidently, that's the way that things are going, and I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So for Ward Four residents who are following the Mohawk Tannery development projects, it will be one of the topics that Mayor Donches addresses at our January 25th at 6:00 PM, Mayor's Town Hall at Led Street School. So definitely check that out. Feel free to attend. The more people are in the room, the more ideas there are, the more the mayor has to explain his policies. So definitely a good time and a great opportunity to meet your neighbors. Additionally, speaking of neighborhoods, neighbors, I want to thank everybody who came out and supported the Veterans, the Holidays for Veterans programs we're doing through Operation Enduring Wellcome. It went out really well that the veterans did an amazing job decorating, and they really, they had a great holidays, and I think it meant a lot that the community would kind of rally for them in that particular manner. Every year is stressful, like you step forward, and you're like, we're going to organize this stuff, and then you get up to the last couple of days, and you're like, really want this to work out. So personally, I'm grateful to everybody who helped manage that. And then finally, I wanted to acknowledge a pretty historic announcement today. It was made by Fort Engage, right around the corner here. It's nearly 100 years old. I think they're in the 94th or 5th year, and their new owners, their new owner will be Amber Morgan. Anybody who's been there recently, over the past year or so, maybe two years, has seen her working there. Anybody who has held office for more than two years, probably worked with her on the Master Planning Committee. She chaired that for the city. She currently chairs the Animal Dog Park Advisory Committee. So Amber's very committed to Nashua. She's very involved. She was born a couple blocks away. She's a Tree Street alumni. So it is encouraging to see. And as the Alderman for Downtown, I see stores changing hands. I see new restaurant owners taking over from old ones. You know, Norton's becomes Caribbean Breeze. The Amsterdam, I think it was a couple generations ago, becoming Casey McGee's. And it just goes to show that our downtown is vibrant, and where some owners are ready to kind of start moving on with their life and taking on other projects, there's someone who's excited about the future of downtown enough to step forward and invest personally, their time, their effort, their energies. So I just want to thank, or wish Amber Morgan and Jody Gage best of luck in their future endeavors. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to extend my condolences to Alderman Tebow and his family, especially his wife Lauren, who lost her sister just a couple days ago. My thoughts and prayers, and thoughts and prayers of my family are with them. Thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo Alderman Lopez's comments about Amber Morgan. She's one of my constituents, and I know how excited she's been about moving forward with this, and I think it's great. Jody Gage has been incredible for the city. He's always been our go-to person for so many, and I know Amber will continue that process. She's an amazing lady. And I just, I don't mean to step on Alderman Dowd's toes, but the Your Ward meeting has been postponed, canceled. So I just wanted to make sure that Your Ward people knew that it has been postponed. And adding to the thank yous for the Delena's House Christmas party and so on, my constituents who stepped up and helped with gift cards, I want to thank them. They did a phenomenal job, and we were able to meet the need of those wards. There were a lot of people that stepped up, but at the last minute, when I contacted my constituents, said, we need help with this one or two days, they rallied, and I thought that was wonderful. As Alderman Lopez said, moving forward, we'll have better plans, so we're not in that crunch anymore, and so on. But thank you so much. And to Alderman Tebow and his wife Lauren, my condolences. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to jump on the bandwagon and say that it was an excellent presentation. Unfortunately, I've had quite a track record over the years professionally with the Mohawk Tannery being on the fire department. It was odorous, and I've been there many times from many different forms of fires, and I think this board got to realize, the owners walked away and left us with pretty much holding the bag here, and that's not good. There's a neighborhood that we affectionately called Little Florida, Daytona and all that area, that I can see great benefit as we continue on with this particular project. So it's not just the development itself, it's the adjacent neighborhoods and everything else, and I'm quite excited. I know we're in the very early stages. That's why I didn't ask too many questions, because I don't think the surface is just being scratched at this particular time. There'll be another time when we can get deeper into the project. But the fact that this seems to be something that will go against, you know, in conjunction with the EPA is good. We do have another super fight. The first one, Super Fund Site, the first one, and I think one of the only ones in America, was down off at Gilson Road, and we all can drive by that bacon piece. To do something as positive as this, I think it really behooves the city to get on board with it. Thank you.
So I had a coworker come up to me the other day and say, so should I sell my house? She lives on Vilna Street, which is right off Falmouth, right above the Mohawk property. I said, no, why would you sell your house? Things are getting better in this neighborhood, right? I mean, it's going to be cleaned up. And, you know, she was more concerned about the traffic, and, you know, they told us tonight, the traffic's not going through that neighborhood. So that was encouraging. And I'm going to reiterate to her tomorrow, keep your house. Don't sell.
Vote for Tom.
Anyway, my condolences also to Derek and his family. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, tomorrow evening at 7:15, there'll be a meeting of the Infrastructure Committee. We do have a couple infrastructure items on the agenda, and immediately following afterwards will be a joint meeting of Infrastructure and PEDC. So if you're bored, come on down.
Anyone else? Committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just to reiterate one more time, the Ward Three meeting, I'm Ward Three.
Two, one night?
The Ward Two meeting with the mayor, Wednesday, has been canceled due to his illness.
Postponed.
Postponed. Alderman Timmons.
Thank you. Tomorrow, board meeting at 11:30 here at Epstein's 34.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the January 10th meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn at 9:02 PM. Thank you, everyone.